We are meeting on Crescent Street Common Development at 444-446-448 Crescent Street. And the notice, the public notice says, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effect will be made to allow the public to review and/or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to check on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number 1301-715-8592. Meeting ID 88491631143. Password 690691. Please only use dial-in or computer, not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the American for Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disability. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodation and/or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or material in alternate form work, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact Town Disability Coordinator William Renault, Town Engineer, at 781-264-6308. As far as, as far in advance of the event to remove any disability barriers for you. So, I guess, just to get it off the table and, and allow Disco, the Disco Babe to go back to his dance class.
Thank you.
You missed it, Brian. He had a disco ball behind him. So, Rick, you want to bring up the transformer issue?
Sure. Do I have the ability to share?
Wait a minute. No, I gotta, I gotta give you that. Sorry.
Now comes the hard part.
All right, you're up.
Jim, you're getting good at that.
Yeah, that was, that was like record time.
Yeah. Bring that disco ball up.
Were you able to share it? Wow.
Yeah. So, the site layout plan here. So, you might recall, we originally had the transformer located on the top side of the retaining wall. Once the folks at Wakefield Light had the opportunity to kick it around, it was determined that that's not the most advantageous location. While a one-time installation wasn't a really big deal, long-term maintenance would require folks to have to travel all the way around the building, which isn't very practical. So what we did was we notched the wall so as to retain this entrance out here up at elevation 115. We created an area back here that'll be filled with crushed stone at the same level as the lower level parking. There'll be a bollard placed in front of each one of these parking spaces. There'll be signage placed in this area that it's not a snow dump. Snow can't be dumped in there. And this transformer configuration appeared to have met the requirements of the, of the town.
The light department is satisfied with the location of the transformer as shown on the plan?
Yeah. Rick, is, do you call out railings around that area?
Uh, yes, there is, uh, right here, concrete retaining wall with the fake wrought iron fence. It'll be placed up here.
On the top of the foundation, okay.
Yeah. So we're about 11 feet above the foundation, above the transformer there.
Okay. And this, this will go into the revised set at this point, along with, isn't there another drawing or two?
Relative to the transformer, well, obviously it affects every single one of the site plans, right? The low-level site plan has been updated as well. And obviously the grading plan has been updated at the same time.
Okay. And we have, the fencing is on that previous drawing, I believe.
Yes, if we go back here, this is the detail.
There's no need to, is there any need to show the layout of the, of the transformer within that cutout?
In terms of dimensions?
Yeah. I'm wondering, Brian, do you think that the board's going to ask any questions about that layout?
Uh, what's, what's that, Jim?
The physical layout for the, for the transformer in the, in the cutout, because there was a blow-up basically that was sent on today, basically on, on, just so he would approve it, or so the power company would approve it.
Think the board might want to see that?
It doesn't hurt.
We're gonna be there Wednesday. You can show that, right, Rick?
We got some room. We can detail it over here with those dimensions. I mean, it's, it seems as though, Jim, you'll appreciate this, that these, a lot of these boards have, have, have lost the fact that these are two-scale drawings, they're two-scale drawings for a reason. But yeah, we can, we can dimension that and put a little detail over here, so that doesn't ever get lost in the translation.
Didn't the email that came out have dimensions on it, right? That email that you sent?
It did, but I, I was, I was trying not to confuse things. That was really for, for your benefit, but, I mean, correct me if, don't you guys set the transformer?
We set the transformer. You, you guys put the pad in, the concrete base. You, you'll put that in and we'll, and we'll put the transformer on top, so.
Jim, I'd be happy to dimension it, but the reality is, if, if the base isn't where they want it, they're not going to set it on it. I mean, right?
Well, I think, I, I think it's, yeah, I wouldn't worry about that. It's more about, you know, just to get it across to some of the people that looking at that little transformer and saying, what the hell, how does that fit in there, you know? I don't think Rick and, I mean, I don't think Chip and I would have any issues, but I, you know, it might be ju, just good to put like a half-scale drawing or something there, whatever, whatever fits in that block.
Yep, that's no problem.
And you're right. Maybe, maybe they move it forward, maybe they do it right, maybe they move it left.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're happy with that layout. I mean, we keep it off the back wall, so it gives us access to walk around on the back. Sides are, you know, fine, six, a little bit more than six feet on each side. And the front, we, we basically got as much as we could in the front. And as you point out, those are visitor spots, so should we have an issue, we just have the cars moved?
Yeah. And, and quite frankly, the, the board is only concerned that it's, that it's not at the front of the site, you know?
Yeah, right.
A little bit of detail here, even if you were to move that transformer left or right, I think the board's not going to care.
Right, okay.
That's right. And when you're standing, and someone's standing here is looking right over the top of it too, you know?
Yeah.
Because you're a couple of feet higher.
Right, right. Okay. Then I think we're set on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. I appreciate everybody working quickly to resolve it, so that's worked out.
That's great. Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate the help.
Yeah, this is a much, much better installation.
Good team effort. So Rick, you showed the signage, right? We showed, you already showed them with that.
Yeah, and then we have these two SP1s, which are down here.
Yep.
Do not dump the snow in transforming area.
Yep. Are these going to be condos or apartments?
Apartments.
Apartments, okay, yep.
Yeah, so you have one point of contact with the management company. Simple.
Yep, that's perfect.
I mean, so Rick, so basically for those parking spaces, they're going to have to remove the snow from the site. Where they're going to put it?
Yeah.
Well, off the back, right?
Hey, Brian, that's how it's always been. You might recall, there used to be a retaining wall right there.
That's right, yep.
There's no change.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if somebody wants to put fence in there, we, we really, we don't want to fence it in, you know? Then we have to worry about locks, and then it becomes a, a trash area that people throw stuff back there. And then, then, you know, the bollards are there, and you know what I mean? It just, it makes it challenging. Cars are there, you have to open the gates up, so if someone brings a fence.
I'll tell you what, you know, you know what will behoove them to do it is, if I were these guys, I would put a heated driveway in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a client that did that on a project. It's unbelievable.
We just did a project, we had a project in Brighton that had a driveway much bigger than this, and it worked out unbelievable.
Yeah.
Well, wait a minute, we're gonna want a larger transformer then.
Yeah, but the problem is, the problem is, is those things are usually gas-fired systems.
Yeah, no gas. But you can make it electric if you want. We're okay.
Can you do them in electric, Dave?
Yes, yeah. Yep, you could do electric. You could do electric right there.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's not that big a driveway, you know, that you'd be able to heat that. You'd probably save a ton of money in snow.
Well, you look at it this way, right? It, it, you, even if you did it to this driveway over here as small as it is, when, when you look at what you pay a snow contractor as an apartment building for an entire season, I bet you your increased electric costs don't even come close to that.
You're still going to have to deal with clearing your front spot, though. I mean, you know, that's, you know.
Clearing what front spot?
Well, the snowplows blocking it.
Yeah, but it's going to be minimal.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's gonna be an ice bank, basically, from the water running down the driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
But it'll be heated, so it won't freeze.
All right.
Okay, you're all set with me?
Yeah, we're all set with you and Rick, unless Rick's got something else he wants to go over. Thank you.
I need Rick, I need Rick, I need Rick for a couple of things.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot, everyone. I appreciate it, and I'll talk to you later.
All right, thank you.
Okay, bye.
Rick, can I share the screen now?
Um, yeah, wait a minute.
Actually, do I have the power to change it, or do you, do you change?
No, I, I think I might have to do it.
I think you might have to relinquish co-host, Rick.
I'll try, right?
You're co-host now, Brian.
Well, again, everyone's, everyone's a host.
Except Joe. You left out.
What I've been doing is I've been tightening up this draft decision. I've been, I've been tightening this up, Jim, and Joe, not to bore you, because a lot of this is just minutia stuff that is just, you know, history of the project, et cetera. So, it's okay with you. I'm going to get right to the chase on some of the issues.
Yeah.
Open. Okay. I, I redlined these things. Rick, we determined now it's 48 feet, right? The building is 48 feet, guys.
Yes, correct.
Right, so the first thing that we had left open was, a lot of this stuff now has kind of gone away because we have notes on the plan. But I just need to confirm with Rick here and make sure we're all on the same page. Right. So, we're going to have to, and I'll kind of come back to this. I can, I can let Rick go after I get to his, his items. So, we had a requirement in here on the stormwater pollution plan, but Rick, is this note now on your plan?
You might want to swim in a little bit.
Oh, sorry, Jim. I, I took it out of the session.
No, we went and prepared this whip and submitted it to the, to engineering. So even though, can't hear you, Brian.
Oh, go ahead.
E, e, even though this doesn't trip a NIPD's construction general permit, under the Wakefield bylaws, they require the stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Yeah, but this one says, a final one. Did you submit a draft? Or a final?
I mean, we submitted a final. Let's see. Yeah, we didn't submit a draft. We submitted a final one.
You did.
When did that comment come into play?
Well, it's not, it's a comment that they had in one of their letters that I didn't want to miss. Well, here's what I'm gonna do. Here's what I'm gonna do.
We were gonna kick, we were gonna kick it down the road, Brian, and we just bit the bullet and decided to do it.
All right, well, I, I don't see a problem with leaving it in here then, anyways. You know, that way it's belt and suspenders for the town. Because they haven't signed off on it yet. You've submitted it, so it's kind of in limbo land. Joe, do you agree with that? It doesn't hurt to have this in there, in the, as a condition.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess the more, the more there, the better, right? I mean.
Yeah, Jim, you okay with that, Jim?
Yeah.
Hey, Joe?
Yeah, me.
Guys are okay with that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, we don't, we do not need a NIPD's permit on this project. Tarrant Lane did, because it was such a big project, so we've taken that out, because we certainly don't want to do one, but we're not required under federal law to do it.
Right.
Right. So that's that. The finding on that contribution, you guys had asked at the last meeting that we put a timeframe on that. So it's prior to CO for the, for the contribution for roadway?
Right.
Okay. Rick, you've already done the stormwater, your stormwater and operation plan is part of your drainage report, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So we're going to get a sign off from, from DPW on that, so we're gonna, we're gonna, that's coming out, because that's going to be done. All right, so then, so that's it on that end, but, but we had, so we had, these are, these are, I'm trying to button this up, and these were the draft conditions, so that we had talked about with the board. So what I've done, I've highlighted in yellow what we don't need anymore, because they're contemplated, all right? Uh, in the decision as written, or through the Tarrant Lane document. So the first one dealt with, uh, the board retaining jurisdiction over minor amendments, and, and that's already in there. That's in the, that's in the decision, so, uh, with the 40B requirements. Number two is to provide all our information to the various departments. That's in there. Already in there, that we have to do that as part of our pre-construction meeting. B is the appearance of the project. That's already in there. As you know, Jim, remember we tweaked that language to say that you have to review the plans?
Right.
By the building permit, okay?
Right, yeah.
And that's number four. That kind of parlays into that. Right?
Yeah.
But I think we need to add number five as a condition of the decision. That deals with providing a mock-up panel, because we don't have one. Tarrant Lane have one in their architectural plans. We don't.
No, no, we need to have one on-site.
Yeah, so I'm going to put that, I'm going to, what I put in red, I'm going to add in conditions of the decision. Okay?
And that, and they should submit us, oh, they probably, we should probably tell them to submit us a layout firsthand. You know, like, like the, like some of the others where they've given us a layout first before they construct it, so we make.
Submit a, submit a mock-up panel plan.
Yeah.
Got it.
Noting, noting all the materials and the like type of thing.
Okay. All right. The O and M plan, which is almost done. And, you know, and number seven, for some reason, the Tarrant Lane didn't have this, but this is a typical condition that you guys have that I think is good, so there's no confusion. If there's any conflict between the plans and the decision, the plans control.
Brian, are you still sharing? Because I can't see where your camera's from.
Can't see my screen, Joe?
I can see, all I see is record of vote.
Oh.
Am I the only one?
No, you're not.
All right, now I do. Yeah, there you go.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, it's nice of telling me that. So number seven, number seven, so what I have in red, I think we need to add. Number seven deals with the, uh, if there's a conflict between the plans and the decision, the plans, plans control.
Yeah.
Number eight is already taken care of in the Tarrant Lane decision. The construction schedule is a provision on that. Interestingly, maybe it's on the landscape plan, but this, number nine is your condition that if, if, to bond any landscaping, if the CO is not, if this, if they want to get CO in the time where they can't finish the landscaping. So I, that needs to go in. It's not in there now.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
Ten is no parking, you know, is parking, that, this is not, this is irrelevant, because, you know, and I refer to it as the Tarrant Lane decision. The Tarrant Lane has a required meeting to go over and document all this stuff with various town officials. So this condition would be conflicting with that. You have to have, if you remember, the Tarrant Lane decision, and let me go back to it for a minute. Way up, hold on. You have to do a construction management plan prior to the commencement, commencement of construction. Okay? With, with Benny, okay, we have to have, um, the scheduling, updated construction scheduling plan at that time with him. Trucking plan. Construction administration, and that's where deliveries are dealt with, with him. That's why I highlighted that. Debris, community contacts, as I said, that's why I got rid of that. Noise and dust control, erosion, utilities, construction staging, parking and traffic, and that's why, that's why I, I, you know, we don't need what would sometimes be a typical condition in some of your other decisions. Guys, okay with that?
Wait a minute, let me finish.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't say anything about off-site parking, though.
No, it's just surrounding streets, right? Not allowed.
I, I don't want to put number 10 in there, because what, what, so what I have in yellow, I don't want in there, because I'm going to go back, because it's already contemplated and it would conflict, because with Tarrant, with the way these 40Bs work, we need to do, prior to construction, we have to do a construction management, management plan with the building inspector. And one of those things is going to be a trucking plan that we have to show him. Scheduling, and C here is construction administration. The construction management plan, so specify the hours of construction, deliveries and trash and debris. We have to give contacts, noise and dust control. Construction staging, Joe.
Yeah, and then.
Aging area, but, and number, the next one is traffic and parking. The construction management plan shall specify onsite and on, off-site if needed parking locations.
Okay.
You want to take the yellow off?
Yeah, I want to take it out, because it's already, you know, it would just be redundant.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, that's what I've done with the, with these, with, as we go through this, I think the yellow needs to come out. And then the next one is the affordable requirements, which are very much in detail already in that, we've done that. Remember, Jim, we went over it.
Like, it's like Tarrant, yeah.
Yeah, and it repeated itself like 30 times on what we're going to do for affordable.
Is, have you updated the numbers on this, so it's correct to this project?
Uh, yeah, I believe I have. Hold on. Let's look at that. 10 unit, right here, so it's 16 one-bedroom units, 22 bedroom and 4 three-bedroom. 25% of the units, 10 units have to be restricted, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And we're going to get into the specs on that. Affordable units. Of the 40 total dwelling units in the project, 10 units, 25%, including 4 one-bedroom units, 5 two-bedroom units, and 1 three-bedroom unit will be restricted. We did update it.
We showed, we showed on the drawing, or you showed on the drawings, the, what was it, two or three units?
The handicap.
Handicap, okay. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm, all right, yeah, no, I'm, I'm off-base here, okay.
Because DHD is going to determine where our units are going to go. Affordables. Right? So, I'm going to go back. So that's all out. Now, one thing that I think we need to put is, is signage for the, this needs to be added and read. This, so this needs to go in our decision. Signage for the property has not been approved by the board. The board's going to retain jurisdiction.
Right.
All right? We've already dealt 15, we've already dealt with the 25,000. Deliveries, we don't need to deal with, because those are in the construction management plan. These conditions need to go in. Crescent Hill side of the parking level should be restricted for residents only. Crescent Street side of the parking garage level shall be restricted for residents, shall be for residents and visitors. And then 10 of the parking spaces in the Crescent Street side shall be designated for visitor parking. And we'll reference that they're shown on the plans, because now they are.
Yep.
Have to have a condition on the camera surveillance. And the electronic access systems.
The crosswalk.
In the crosswalk, you know, that, it's on the plan, but we need language that it's going to be, it's going to be done.
Yep.
Because it's just not referenced in the decision. The motion sensors, we already took care of, because those were on Peters plans.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And then the, the last one I got here is, I think we need, you know, we're anticipating some directional signage here, um, that everyone's talked about. Like, but to, to, we do kind of, uh, visitors not to go up Crescent Hill. But we all agree, we don't know where, you know, where it's going to be appropriate until later under construction or when it's.
No, and there was some, there was discussion about inside the garage also, so that.
That's right.
You know.
Brian, we do have some of that signage on there. There is, um.
Well, Rick, take over for me, would you? Go ahead. Raise your hand, Rick. You want to be called on?
I don't know, I don't know how my hand got up, but it's up. I didn't do it. Right here, we have this sign right here, R3-1, which is a no right turn.
Okay, let's look at that. Where's that going?
Yeah. Right, it should come out the garage.
And we put striping on the, on the garage floor that says, you know.
So there's a, where's the sign? Is it outside, Rick, R3-1, okay?
Right, yeah.
Yep, but, but if you go down to the, if you go down to this Crescent Street side, what the board's talked about is on the Crescent Hill side, right? Well, and that's area is to, you know, have a sign that says visitor parking in garage, you know? And then somewhere on the left-hand side, they have a sign somewhere in here that says, you know, to, to really tell people, don't go up Crescent Hill if you're here to visit, because there's no visitor parking.
Gotcha.
But, 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 but nobody knows, you know, nobody knows what's going to work there, or what, what will look good. So what the board said was, let's just table that, not require anything, but reserve the right to put something there.
Yeah, we have to see it in operation, basically, to. Yeah, we have to see it in operation basically to see what mitigation we have to put in place.
Yeah. So Jim, what I, what I, what I was hoping to do, I'm gonna stay light, uh, late and get this, uh, decision cleaned up with what I just kind of highlighted.
Yep.
I'd like to send it to you in the morning just for a quick review before I send it into the board by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep. Yes.
Tomorrow, for Wednesday night, I want to send them, Rick's plans are done now, uh, um, uh, Peter's are done, and then we can, we'll be able to submit the draft decision.
Okay.
Okay with that, Joe?
Yeah, I just added this too.
Okay.
Good. Looks great.
What, with the measurements?
Are you gonna add something?
Yeah, Bri- Brian, uh, now that we have the signage for the snow, is that, should we add that also in the in the conditions under snow management, just to make the, the bullet that they can't be add, you know, push the snow towards that transformer, or is the sign gonna be enough on the plan?
The snow, in the snow, in the operation maintenance plan, it's gonna be a provision that's gonna, you know, basically be, um, you know, that they have to remove. Well, hey, Steve and Joe, you're on. So Rick, can you bring up that plan again with the transformers? Because they're both on, so let's get their input on this. Is they gonna build it and operate it? Steve, are you there? Can you come off mute?
Yeah, oh yeah, what was the question?
We're gonna show you.
All right.
So, I, I don't know if they know, so.
Go to the site plan, Rick.
So, trans, you know the transformers going here, they, the, the, the town requested that these two signs get put in that says, do not dump stone transformer area.
That's fine.
Brian brought up a good point. You guys might want to seriously consider heating this driveway.
Well, well, we, we, we thought of that as well. Um, we haven't even, we haven't priced it out. You know, but, you know, it, it might say.
Plowing it every snowstorm.
I, i- i- yeah, because we have to remove the snow. Can't just.
Yeah, that's the problem, guys. You know, you're gonna have to remove it. You got nowhere to dump it there.
Yeah, so, so. Oh, there he is, he's good, he's driving. Yeah, so we, we, we. Okay, so we, we haven't, we haven't decided on that. Yeah, we didn't want to have to do a condition right now.
No. The condition, no, you're not gonna have a condition that you heat it, but you're gonna have.
That's a boil it, there's no gas. I mean, they're not gonna give us any gas on this building.
I know, I know. We talked about that with the light department.
Yeah, it would have to be electric and then at that point.
Not in the future or nothing.
Oh, they don't need to do it now, Joe?
Then, then, they, they said, he said he's not even, not even in the future. They're gonna have, uh, the, the gas for these places. So we asked them today, Vincent. Um, Vin McMahon. Um, so basically, i- i- it's, it's, you know, the cost, when we look at everything to put it in and then actually heat it with the electricity, I think that's gonna be, you know, the factor. I mean, i- i- it's, I think it's gonna be a wash anyway.
Yeah.
To have it, you know, the rarity of the storm that we're gonna need to remove that. And, and I, I just don't want to be tied to it, but, but, so, I mean, but putting the, putting the signs up, putting the signs up, no, but, putting the signs up, um, yeah, we're fine, we're fine with that.
Oh, no, the board, the board is not looking to condition, make you heat it. It was just a discussion that it might be practical, but you are, you know, the board is requiring a condition that you're.
Yeah, the only thing the board's gonna condition is you gotta remove the snow from that area.
Yeah, you gotta remove.
Yeah.
How you do it, whether you do it with a bobcat or with a heated driveway is entirely up to you.
I, I have a four hundred square foot unit in Georgetown, a little commercial unit that's heated by electric heat. Cost me eight hundred dollars a month to heat.
Well, no, I hear you. I, I, you know, I, you know, you wonder too if those things break over time underground, then, then what do you got?
Yeah, then you're screwed. I, I, I just don't know, I, I, I'd have to factor out the costs, you know, and really weigh that.
And you gotta do some research on how good it works.
This is, this is Jim McBane. This is entirely up to you. It was only a part of a conversation. It's what, it's not part of anything the board has been looking for, at least not yet, and I don't think it is, as, as Rick said, basically, however you remove it, you just have to remove it.
Yeah.
And that's entirely up to you.
Yeah, like I said, well, well, yeah, we'll definitely, but look, we, I, I, it was definitely something that I wanted to look into. You know, as far as, uh, making it just easier on everyone.
All right, good.
That's what I got.
What else you got, Brian?
That's what I got. I'm done.
Okay.
So I'll get that to you early tomorrow, Jim.
Okay, all right.
And then at least we can get the draft to the board.
Hello? Brian, can you hear me?
Yeah.
And Joe, yep.
Yeah, I just pulled over, so I can hear you because I'm l- lush, I'm driving. My question is, what, what was determined on the wall?
Go ahead, Rick.
The retain, the retaining wall, the brick wall. I mean, we talked about it and I know the gentleman that said, listen, if you're gonna stock it, I just want to know if you're stuck on it color roughly to match the existing. And something happened, Brian, today, we, we went up with a stone?
And the board wants you to put the, with the veneer stone you're putting on the foundation, they want on the wall.
Is that you, Jim?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to know where it came from.
Yep. Well, I think it, it came from one of our past meetings basically because the question came up at that past.
I think it was Chip that brought it up originally.
No, Chip brought it up and Chip did not mention stone. He said, whatever you're planning to do with it, label it on the print if you're gonna stock it with or grind it or whatever. Well, it was not mentioned that we had a match. That's all I'm asking.
I think that would be the best solution.
Which one?
The stone, the stone.
Well, it definitely looks nicer, I can tell you that.
Yeah. I, 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 I've had experience with veneers that cracks and peels off, not well bonded, you know? So I, I wouldn't want to see something that deteriorates after a while and just looks terrible.
So, so what are you saying? Stock it?
Well, stone.
The same veneer on, that's on the foundation?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so I, all right, just wanted to make sure I got it clear.
Yep.
That's all. All right, that's fine.
Joe, one other, Joe, what other questions you got, anything?
No, no, that was really it.
Okay.
I, I keep adding up all these twenty and thirty thousand dollar things.
Oh, we, 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 we got the bill. Did you see the bill today for the, uh?
Sixty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, for the transformer.
Don't pay it.
The transformer, you said we don't make any money on it. It's not profit.
We're not a profit.
Twenty-three thousand for the transformer and forty thousand for labor. I said, what the heck can it be forty thousand in labor?
I'm in the wrong business.
They don't have to rent a crane anymore to put it up on the wall, so.
I was gonna say, is that covered for the crane, Joe?
Yeah, that might have been, that might have been.
Crane, crane labor copper. I said, can I deliver it and put it in myself?
Well, they don't need a crane anymore, Joe.
Uh, yeah, well, maybe, maybe, maybe he didn't realize that, but he said.
I think, I think they put that bill together before. We just came up with this final solution in the past two days, so I think.
No, he called this morning. He called this morning and said he got the approval to price it.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we talked to him after, yeah.
Well, you know what, Dave, too bad Dave Paulson, the light department wasn't still on the call there.
I wanted to know, I said, if I get it from, if I get it from, uh, the other electric company, can I bring my own?
Yeah. Hey, Dad, we can barely hear you. We're going through a bad area.
Well, we, we get an approval and then we'll go for that. I'm in the Hampshire, that's why. You guys are lucky.
Right, I think we're good.
All right.
Very good, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Hey, thank you.
Jim, logging off, Jim.
Yeah, I'm gonna log off here.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So this was the end of the meeting for, uh, Crescent Street at this point, so we're all logging off.